Well, Seth.
Hi, Robbie.
Hello.
Um, to our guests, we think we've got some guests on this evening, so I want to welcome them to our board meeting.
Hold on, guys. We can't really start till 6:30.
Well, what time is it?
Yeah, we got a couple of minutes, I think.
Yep, I'm chomping at the bit here.
I know, that's okay, but I just wanted to say, you know, we should wait.
Oh, yes, I, okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. I was expecting to see the applicants and some folks online here. Not seeing anything.
You see the attendees?
Well, I've seen someone.
I've got one that says there are 10 attendees.
Okay.
Yeah, you have, yes.
How many, Debbie?
Adam Barrett, who I think represents Out Front Media.
Oh, good.
Is probably your applicant on the item number two.
Okay, good to hear. And then Ms. Goodman, is there a Ms. Goodman on?
There's Sunny Goodman.
Yeah, there we go. I got Sunny Goodman and Adam Barrett. Yeah, that looks good. Okay, I just wasn't sure. I didn't see them. I just opened the participants. Thanks for reminding me. Thank you.
Click on the view attendees, you'll see all the attendees are.
Yep.
All right. So we see members, but we don't actually see the attendees, or we will when they, when they speak?
I can make them a panelist whenever it's time for them to speak, or I can make them a panelist right now. I don't know how you guys want it.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Robbie, that'd be fine.
You're gonna go ahead and make them a panelist?
I mean, they're gonna be first up, so we might as well tap that.
Oh, it's gonna be, which one's gonna be first?
Uh, it's going to be the, uh...
The billboard.
The billboard sign there by McLaren Headquarters on I-75.
Out Front Media.
And who is that?
It's Mr. Barrett there, I believe. I don't have the list, but let me just pull it up.
All right, I'll make him a panelist.
Well, I thought Denise...
Now, you know, you know who else would be Denise Bartholomew, I'm just noticing.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's, she's the one, and she will let us know who else she might want on there. That would be the best.
Well, I've got Adam on and Denise on.
Okay, if you unmute her, if you can, maybe we could just ask if somebody else on the list she would like to have them part of the...
Hi, this is Adam Barrett. There should be a couple more people. There should be somebody from McLaren, I believe.
Do you have names?
Jim Proctor from McLaren. This is Denise Bartholomew. I'm also on and unmuted now.
Okay, we got you.
So we're accepting Jim Proctor from McLaren, Jet Kilmer from the Grand Blank Chamber, and also Adam Brozo from Out Front Media Flint Market.
Okay, I see Jet Kilmer on.
I, I don't think we need to make all of them participants or members at this time, but, you know, when, when they want to speak, they'll raise their hand, right?
Yes.
Okay, however you need to manage it, Robbie, just, I'll just get out of your way.
Okay, are we ready then to start our meeting?
Yeah, it's 6:30, let's go.
Okay, to all of the attendees today, welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for September 15th, 2020, and at 6:30 P. M. Uh, what I'd like to do now is have a roll call of the attendees, at least from the township point of view. Uh, Mr. Lloyd, who is our planning and zoning administrator, uh, Mr. Atkins, and Ms. Hone, who are board members along with myself, uh, in addition to Ronnie. And as I think I said much earlier, David Alati, who's our township attorney. Uh, what I'd like to have happen now is, I did not receive any minutes from our last meeting, so I don't know that we have anything to approve.
We, and Mr. Chairman, that is my fault. Um, Mr. Laddie got those over to me and time just got away from me, so I did receive a copy of them, and maybe what we could do is just have them added to them next, for next month's meeting, because nobody else got them.
Okay.
That is my fault, and I apologize for that.
Does that work for all of the other board members?
Aye.
So if we could table that until next month?
Okay, that's what we'll do then.
Okay.
Um, and you've had an opportunity to look at the agenda. I would seek to get approval for tonight's agenda from our board members.
Uh, so moved? Did the support, I'm sorry?
Yes, yes.
Uh, support of the board agenda this evening.
Yep, and who said that, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I missed that. Thanks, Mr. Eaton. Uh, in addition, last thing is, Mr. Ragsdale is absent this evening, so I think we're ready to go. And the first thing, well, I also want to have pledge of allegiance. I almost forgot that.
Did we get the vote on the agenda?
I think...
We got a motion and a support, but we did not get the vote.
Oh, okay, thank you. So all in favor of accepting the agenda for this committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign? Okay, I guess that's, uh, would be considered being approved then. Uh, as I was beginning to say, let's talk about the pledge of, um, pledge of allegiance. I know we're maybe setting down or wherever we're at, but I still would very much like to have that done, so do you have a volunteer to lead us off?
Mm-hmm.
Looks like Mr. Eaton is ready.
Uh, allegiance to this flag, the United States.
States of America.
And to the...
For which stands?
Nation.
God.
Under God, this is what is visible, and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, um, we have two items on our agenda this evening, your new business, and the first one is, um, for, for, uh, Out Front Media, Denise Bartholomew, and she's from Grand Rapids. Am I correct, Denise?
That's correct, and I also manage the real estate portfolio on our Flint Market as well.
Okay, very good then. All right, thank you. Uh, you're on the agenda right now, and you're looking, I know you've had some discussions with MDOT regarding the placement of the sign. It's been there for quite a long time. Maybe you can tell us when it was, when it was placed there.
I'd like to speak on behalf of Out Front Media if I could. Um, I'd also like to make sure if we can invite into the room, I think, uh, we said before that Jet is also, I think, in the waiting room. If he can be admitted in. Adam Broza of Out Front is also in the waiting room. Uh, we might have, we might have Jim Proctor as well.
Okay, well, you've got a plethora of people going, going to speak on your behalf, but let's kind of keep it organized if we...
Fair enough, but on behalf of Out Front Media, I will, I will be happy to answer your questions and, and make our presentation if, if you're ready for us.
Okay, well, my initial question to Denise, do you, either of you recall when this billboard was erected there on I-75?
The billboard was erected in 1991.
1991, okay, so good long time ago. Obviously, things have changed with, uh, MDOT, and, uh, as I understand, they, they believe that your sign is in the right of way on I-75 North.
Actually, it's not, it's not that it's in the right of way. What, uh, at some point, subsequent to the erection of the sign, Out, uh, MDOT acquired property for, uh, potential future road developments, and as a result of that, purchased, uh, this property through condemnation. And so this is not property that's in the right-of-way fence, it's, it's actually outside of the fence, but it's on property that Out Front, that MDOT is holding in case of future needs. And so our intent here is to move this sign with MDOT's consent back onto the McLaren property where we intended it at no time.
You're giving me a long-winded speech here, and if you don't slow it down some, we're never gonna get it done. Besides, now I hadn't really finished until you wanted to jump in, so I would appreciate it if you would raise your hand rather than just interrupting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, the purpose of the hearing is to receive comments, uh, from the public to consider an appeal, uh, regarding the movement of the sign that we've been talking about. So if there are any people on the, on the line right now that would like to speak regarding the relocation of the signage, I would be more than happy to hear you, and I'm sure board members will as well. David?
Sure. Can we, if possible, would you consider, again, allowing, uh, presentation for Mr. Barrett or others before we begin to take the comment? Would you consider that?
No, that's right. All right, I think that makes sense. Thanks, David. So, Mr. Barrett?
I'm sorry, and I, and I apologize for speaking before. I thought you were asking me for my presentation, so I, let me, let me be direct on, on this, so we can get to the public comment as well.
Sure.
Again, I'm Adam Barrett on behalf of Out Front Media, and I'm with Denise Bartholomew, with Adam Brozo, that company. Out Front Media seeks permission to move its existing billboard that is located within the township at approximately I-75 and Hobby Road, which is the current, uh, McLaren Headquarters. Although the billboard was erected in 1991, it was learned last year that it was actually erected, uh, within property that, that MDOT had subsequently acquired from, um, idea of future use. It is not in the right of way of any sort. Out Front's application is for both a dimensional and non-dimensional variance to allow the sign to be moved from its existing location and put back on the property owned by McLaren, who is our current lessor. And that is aware of the request and has agreed that Out Front, uh, may seek to move the billboard from the township and be in compliance with state law to do so. Uh, this billboard, uh, is unique in Out Front's, uh, inventory, which I think is reflected by the fact that Out Front has received letters of support, which I know that Denise has submitted, not only from McLaren Hospital, which currently uses a portion of the sign, but also from, uh, the Grand Blank Chamber of Commerce, and I know that Jet Kilmer is here today, as well as Soviet Credit Union. We have submitted all of those, and I would ask that they be a part of the record. I can, I can send them again, or make them a part of the screen, or however you want me to share them. The vast majority of billboards in Michigan, as well as other states, and Out Front is no exception here, promote local advertising. And, and, and that's key with this billboard. It is currently used by McLaren, is also currently used by the union to identify and promote messages of importance to them. The, the request for the dimensional variance is reflected in the Planning Department's comments, but it's, but what's missing as well is the request for a use variance. And I want to make sure that this is, that this present, part of the presentation is clear. Out Front is not seeking to erect a monument sign as the Planning Department seems to, has suggested. Um, it's simply trying to move that sign that, that's currently in place. And so under the Township's ordinance, section 5.199C, the, the moving of a non-conforming sign is not allowed without permission of the township through, through, obviously through use variance. And so what we're asking is not to erect a, a, a new sign or a new monument sign. We're erecting, we're asking to move this sign that it will be the same height at 50 feet, which it currently is, and the same dimensions of 672 square feet, which is a standard bulletin size, um, on the freeway that, that I, I think the ladies and gentlemen that are here tonight are, are familiar with seeing. Ultimately, Um, Out Front wants to keep this billboard in place because of its importance to, 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 um, its customers, including local businesses, including the Chamber. And if we were held to the standard of a monument sign, this billboard could be no higher than five feet or 32 square feet. That's a part of our dimensional request, to the extent that, that the board wants to look at it from that direction, which is, a sign could not be seen by its intended audience here at the freeway. It's, it's clear that the ordinance here is drafted to identify, uh, to have monument signs at the access point of, of properties. Uh, it is not addressing directly the issue of having a, a sign that is visible from the freeway. Um, outdoor advertising is, is, is not a prohibited use in the Township's ordinance. There are other billboards within the township, uh, that exist. This billboard, however, due to its location, um, and, and the issues with MDOT, at a no fault of Out Front's own, um, needs to be moved, and we asked that the board would allow us, we can maintain this property. As it relates to the future, Out Front Media, once this billboard is erected, would be subject to the Township's regulations. But variance is granted, that variance would only be allow it to be erected, uh, or moved. It would not affect its ability or allow Out Front to make it higher, move it again. Um, this is a one-time type of shot or type of deal here. We would ask that the, uh, Board grant Out Front's alternative requests for dimensional and, uh, uh, non-dimensional variances. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, to our board members and, and see, uh, any of you folks have any questions to ask, uh, from the presenter. David, Mr. Laddie?
For Mr. Lloyd and Mr. Barrett as well, what, did the application indicate that there was a use variance requested?
What we wrote on the application is that we alternately sought a variance of section 5.199C. That's, that's a use variance.
I see 5.193C height?
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. 5.19.9.9C.
I don't, I'm not, well, Mr. Uh, Mr. Lloyd, I, I, am I missing that in the application?
Uh, yeah.
And then my second question for Lloyd would be, did you notice for, for that variance section?
Well, let's, uh, let's make sure, if you don't mind, I, I would like to be able to just, to, to get that section again, please. Give me that one, please. 5.19?
5.19. I'm sorry, 5.19.9C is in Charlie.
Okay. Now, when you read C, I just want to make sure we're, we're looking at the same stuff. My 9C is an enforcement provision. And it talks about, in addition, the enforcement and penalty provisions of the zoning ordinance apply to sign. So I'm not sure which section you're reading, unfortunately.
Oh, okay. I, I do see it on the, I see it on the bottom of the application. So, uh, uh, Mr. Lloyd, I'm looking at their request variance and seeing 5.193C, which is height. And then other section specified in the ordinance talks about 32 square feet, and then 5.197L, which is the erection of a pole sign, and then I see at the bottom, alternatively seeks variance of 5.19, 5.19.9C to move existing sign. Okay, so I, I...
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I think, I think the handwriting's off. I think it, I'm, I'm looking at the ordinance now. It's 5.19.8C, which is a non-conforming sign shall not be relocated, expanded, or changed.
Right.
So.
So it was just the wrong section. So it's, it's 5.19.8C?
Yep. I think it's a handwriting issue, yeah. I think, I think the intent was to put the, to put that section down.
8C, okay.
So did we notice for that?
Sorry, David, say that again, please.
So I, I'm asking Lloyd if we, if we include that in our public notice.
Yeah. Not that section.
Does that cause a problem?
Does it, uh, for me, we've just indicated entirety of 5.19. So we've got the entire section covered.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Barrett, do you concur that that would meet the requirements if they listed the entire?
I mean, it's, we, I think it would be a form over substance argument to suggest that our request to move the sign is not documented and given notice to the, uh, the surrounding citizenry.
Okay. All right, my question's been answered, uh, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions, as the board members?
Ms. Hone?
Yeah, the, I guess that's, that's one of the things I was gonna point out in diving into the ordinance. Um, billboards are described as off-premise sign, and they're not permitted in the zoning district. Therefore, it's non-conforming. So I think, um, and I'm gonna speak for Mr. Lloyd for the moment, um, that by quoting the monument sign, it's because it's the only sign that is permitted. So that's the only standard in which he could go by. So, um, with it not being conforming, then it does refer to section eight, subsection C of the sign ordinance.
Anyone else? Mr. Atkins? Mr. Eaton? Okay. Hearing them, then, uh, Ms. Bartholomew, do you have anything else that you would like to add to the conversation?
I don't have anything to add, but thank you for your consideration, and I'll defer to Adam to continue his presentation and ask question, or answer questions as needed.
Okay.
There is a Sunny Goodman on. I'm not sure if he has a question. This guy's hand raised. Mr. Goodman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you have a comment or a question on, uh, this topic?
Uh, I did not. I was just trying to figure out how to get, uh, the video and the voice to work.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yep, no problem.
All right.
Yo. Um, I had a question, uh, I think, um, was from Denise when, uh, when she sent this over to us. And I'm looking at what I think is the proposed site to move the billboard. Is that correct? And I'm looking, I'm looking for a page number. I guess it's C dot 1 dot 0.
Mr. Brown, are you asking me if that, uh, is the site plan showing the proposed move isn't the application?
No, I just was, I want to verify that I understand, maybe some of my colleagues as well, but I think the one that you circled appears to be the, the, um, place where the sign would be placed. Then that's kind of redundant, but, um, is that what you're proposing here? I want to make sure.
If, I'm not sure if you're able to screen share that, but I can, uh, answer that question. The circle that, there's text right next to it says, okay, McLaren Healthcare is on the site plan for the whole entire property. The triangle that you see closest, uh, to the right on that page, that is the location of the existing billboard that is on MDOT property. And as you go, um, essentially up and over to the left, that shows the proposed relocation. If you sit on that, it shows the dimensions. It shows the sign is the exact same size, and we're just moving right to the very edge of McLaren property instead of MDOT property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I hope that helps.
Sorry, someone spoke, Mr. Lloyd? Is that you? Whoops, you're muted.
That's okay, it looks like I'm good, thank you. I have a screenshot that I can show of the, of the plan that I think you're referring to, um, that everybody can look at, uh, which might be helpful. Uh, and it says that I can share my screen, so let me do that. I'm hopeful that everybody can see this, and if you can see the mouse moving in that corner as well, you'll see the current location is, is here, if everyone is seeing it. And then the proposed location is here. Mr. Brown, what you're looking at is, it's the same picture basically, but it's just a little different. It's not highlighted, so I thought it might be a little more clear. But yeah, this was, uh, this was the one.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Sure thing.
Uh, again, any other questions from the board? If not, I think we have a number of people who would like to, uh, have an opportunity to speak. What do you think, uh, Mr. Laddie, that we should be thinking about?
No, I think that let's, let's see what the, uh, the folks have to say, and then, um, come back, and the board can, can begin its deliberation and, and ask any follow-up questions.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, um, whoever happens to be in the audience representing McLaren, is there anyone representing McLaren that would like to speak?
Board, I do have Jim Proctor, who's trying to get on right now. Uh, he just had sent me a message. He's unable to connect. He's working to hop on, so maybe we can circle back around and see if he's able to join after we get through the rest of the individuals who would like to speak tonight.
I just made him a panelist, so he should be...
Right, thank you.
I'll show him on here.
Here's Jim.
It's like he's on a phone. Now, if folks can hear me, um, I do have a letter from, um, McLaren. I have two correspondents that came in on this project, and I'll be happy to share them when we're done with, uh, the, the public comments.
But I don't see any, uh, any other folks in the audience that would like, they've had the opportunity to ask questions or add to the conversation. And if that is indeed correct, we'll close the public comments.
I think Jet Kilmer would like to speak.
Oh, I'm there.
Also Jim Proctor.
All right. Go right ahead, Ms. Kilmer.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Brown. My name is Jet Kilmer. I'm the president of the Grand Blank Chamber, and so I, I wanted to speak on behalf of Out Front Media. As the Chamber President, being here over 16 years, I've worked with them on many occasions, and during these things, I just want to say that I think it's very important that we try to help any business, especially as challenging as it is right now. So I am hoping, I am asking on behalf of myself and on my board, that you will look, and the board will look basically on the request from Out Front Media, and definitely support and recommend a change to full board. So I appreciate you letting me...
Thank you. Uh, any questions of Ms. Kilmer from the board? Okay, is there anyone else out in the audience that would like to speak?
Mr. Proctor, are you there?
I don't see anyone.
Jim did plan on speaking tonight. I do see that he's on. I'm just wondering if there's a connection issue.
I just had him.
Oh, okay. We'll wait for Robbie.
He was just on the camera. I don't know if, uh, there's a connection issue.
Yep.
There we are. A fleeting glimpse.
Well, in the meantime, if I'm on.
You are.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll share my screen here, because I have a letter from McLaren. I'd put it right on the screen if you guys would like. Um, and then I have the other correspondence. I'm happy to share both of those if you'd like now while we're waiting to try to get hooked up. Okay, here we go. So I've got the shared screen, and here is the first, uh, letter, and this one is from, uh, McLaren themselves, and they're saying, you know, that they've requested it, and they're very much, if you'd like, I could read it into the record or just introduce it into the record, but they're supportive. Um, it's an off-site, uh, premise sign structure advertised for business merchandise, sir, which is not sold, produced, manufactured, furnished on the property. Uh, McLaren fully support the approval of granting the variance, and the existing billboard is a resource to advertise for a fee to McLaren and the Teamsters Union. And basically, they're saying they'd like to keep it. They are participants in the Allied Challenge, and they use it for that. And they strongly encourage ZBA to approve the variance, and that's from Mr. James Proctor. And so hopefully that helps a little bit, and then I'll go ahead and show you a copy of the other one, and this is from the folks at Amerilodge, which are the owners of the Holiday Inn Express over there right around the corner. And what they're saying is they want to go on record as to vigorously object to the movement and placement of the billboard, and that if it was moved, it would further block visibility of one of their, their only sign visible from the southbound traffic, and... And they did provide some photographs here. This one shows, this is not the best one. Let me, let me track down a different one than I have. Not sure why that happened. Robbie, I'm not sure how to get my screen back. Gosh darn it.
What screen are you using?
Well, I, I just left the, here, hang on. Because I'm sharing my screen. For some reason, all I got is this kind of small screen here. And I, I'm not sure how to make it larger. I see Ronnie's face, but I, the screen is gone. Oh, here, wait, let me see if I can do this. No, didn't work. That's just silly. Let me hit stop sharing. There, there, now I'm back. Gosh darn. Yeah, I'll go ahead and try to find that. If, hopefully we could still talk with Mr. Proctor, but give me a chance to just go grab that. Ah, I remember now. Let me, let me try this. There we go. There it is. Sorry about that. This. Find myself again. Here we go. Sorry that's taking a while, but. Here's the letter that I had mentioned that came from them, and it's the same one. What I wanted to do was to take, have an opportunity to also show you the, they did do a bit of a graphic to give folks an idea of what they're seeing as the change. If, if you can hear me and you can see this graphic, you'll see that they've gone up the freeway and they're looking southbound. And you can see the, the sign as it is. And then what they've done is they've shown where it would be when they move it. And what that does to them is it blocks the view of their existing sign from a point on the I-75. And of course, you know, that's of concern to them. So the movement they're claiming would create a problem with visibility for their existing sign. I just wanted to give you that information that we received as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. A question, is there anyone in the audience that would want to be representing the hotel? And have the opportunity to speak? All I hear is silence, so I guess not.
I have to, I need to unmute everybody to see who, who would be speaking. I've got a bunch of people here, so there might be some feedback.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening. This is Jim Proctor.
All these people, douchey as fuck.
Mr. Proctor?
Mr. Proctor?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can't hear me to the house?
Yep, you're in there as a call-in user.
Hi, this is Jim Proctor with McLaren Healthcare. And I'm calling on behalf of McLaren and Outfront Media in regards to the letter that we sent in on September 9. And we fully support the movement of the Outfront Media's current existing billboard sign to be moved slightly. And I've discussed this with our neighbors and Civita and other folks that have no issue with it. So we see no issue with moving the sign to the location indicated in the proposal provided by Outfront Media.
Anything else? Guess that must be it.
Nope. We just strongly encourage, encourage the ZBA to approve the variance and we appreciate your good consideration.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Chairman Brown, if I could just make one other, it's, the board has this letter. And I, I don't think I'm able to share my screen. But I would make, I would like to just read in a very short letter that I have, that I thought we had submitted to Civita, from Civita Credit Union. And it says, "To whom it may concern if dated September 10, 2020." It's written by Jennifer Shaw, Director of Marketing of Civita. "I have enjoyed a positive professional relationship with the representatives of Outfront Media for approximately five years. During this time, I've enjoyed working with their team to purchase billboard advertising along major streets and highways in Genesee and Lapeer County. The Outfront Media billboard located along I-75 north of Holly, voting for blank is located in close proximity to our Grand Blank Branch office. We understand that a proposal has been made to move the billboard to the property McLaren Corporate owns. We support this proposal and feel that this will not negatively impact our business. If you have further questions or concerns, I can reach Jeff and she provides a phone number and an email address. Thank you."
Thank you. Okay, is, again, I'll give, give the last time here for any participants that want to speak on this case. If so, please let us know and you have your three minutes. Okay. Having heard, heard anything, nothing, I'm going to call the open, open portion of the meeting. Mr. Lloyd, anything that we ought to be discussing as a board now? I'll ask that of all of the board members. While I'm thinking about it, with, with Mr. Laddie, the moving, the physical moving of the sign to just a, a small distance, but the movement of the sign changed what can and cannot be displayed, not necessarily what's on the billboards. But has it come under any newer regulations? The applicant would have to adhere to?
I'm not, I'm not certain I understand your question. But I, can you rephrase it? I'm not certain I understand exactly what you're saying.
Oh, maybe I have to fall back to Mr. Lloyd. I was thinking, and I'll ask my colleagues as well. I thought there had been some changes in the, in the ordinances that would be pertinent to this discussion here. Now, maybe I'm wrong in that, but the movement of the physical movement of the sign, does it change anything from a restriction standpoint?
Well, so, so I, I think, and I'll have Mr. Lloyd speak on this as well. There, you have in, in the application, you have the identification of three sections of your zoning ordinance. You have 5.193C, which has, which has a prohibition on height above five feet. The proposal is 50 feet. You have, next section not specified in the ordinance, deny letter states 32 square feet. This request is for 672 square feet. And then you have 5.197L, which identifies a prohibited sign, which prohibits the direction of a pole sign. And then as an alternative, and the applicants point this out, we have a section called 5.198C, which talks about a non-conforming sign. And it says that a non-conforming sign, meaning a pole sign, can't be relocated, expanded, or changed, except as to the periodic message changes. Well, we have a request here to relocate it. We have, item number two, it can't be structurally altered to prolong the length of the sign. But I think that isn't necessarily relevant because, because the relocation is primarily the issue. And, and applicants, I'm, I'm assuming that there is no proposal to struct, alter the sign, simply pick it up and move it.
Correct.
That's our understanding.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, that's good. So, so I don't think sub two applies. And then sub three doesn't apply because that talks about damage. So you have, again, that, that section talks about the prohibition of moving a sign that is non-conforming or not allowed on your ordinance to a different location. I think, one of the questions I had for the applicants is there, is there currently, I mean, it looked to me like a part of this sign, maybe the, I want to say, I guess, the back corner of it is on the McLaren property. But it looks like maybe two-thirds of it is, is in that, that property that's not owned by McLaren. Is that, am I correct about that? And I'm looking at, looking at the site plan.
I would say that the percentages you're using are approximately correct. It's mostly on the M dot acquired property.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think that Mr. Lloyd has identified the appropriate sections of the zoning ordinance for, for the board to consider. And again, if I've misunderstood your question, or if Mr. Lloyd can, can, would like to add to that.
I think I'm fine, Mr. Laddie. Thank you. So our board members, I think we've got all of the information that we have. And as a result of that, let's talk about it if, if we can, please. Mr. Thompson?
I got no questions right now.
Okay. Mr. Atkins?
No questions. Thank you.
And Ms. Hone?
I don't have any questions, but I will at least have the input that, yes, it is prohibited. And the ordinance says specifically that it should not be relocated. And in addition to that, we've just taken a lot of time in the past by granting sign variances for many of those businesses along 75 due to the high traffic and everything else. If the billboard was there and staying there, then we have to deal with that. But we have an opportunity now to maybe clean that up a little bit. And not really for the justification, but at least the reason that we granted some variance, signed variances along 75 was for vision. And if we're looking at, I guess, making it more difficult for people to see those businesses, I, you know, that would be going against what we've already done in the past couple of years.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Eaton?
Just in regards to the minimum variance, it does look like on that line that it is as close to the line as it can possibly be for them. And that's all I have really can do.
Okay. Bring, bring it to a close. Right now, in terms of our deliberation, I'm looking for a motion from one of my board members regarding this case.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that I wanted to ask a question. On the ZBA review, Mr. Lloyd, it looks like case number 20-2089, under her new business on her agenda, it has a different number. Which number should I refer to, the case number?
On the agenda, you, you should reference variance V number 20-001.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would make a motion to deny case V dash 20 dash 001 based on the fact that billboards are prohibited and this is an off-premise sign that is not permitted in this zoning district. And specifically, our zoning ordinance calls out that it shall not be relocated.
Anything else, Mrs. Hone? Any other board members? Would you like to speak before we take a vote? And I'm, I'll be looking for a motion. And in this case, I think, Mrs. Hone, you've completed that. Is there anyone that needs some help? Mr. Laddie?
Well, you're going to need a second before you're going to carry on.
Yeah, exactly. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone heard that. So do I hear a second for Mrs. Hone's recommendation?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any others? Otherwise, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Mrs. Hone? I'm sorry, Mr. Laddie?
Can we do a roll call vote?
Yes, that's what I'm going to ask for right now. So all in favor of the motion, say, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, can we, can we poll each member?
Yes, we can poll each member.
So, and I'll be happy to do that. Or, Mr. Lloyd, do you want to do that?
No, please. Go right ahead, David.
All right. So, so the motion's on, on the floor. It's been seconded. A motion in favor, or a vote in favor of the motion will be to deny the variance. Ms. Honea?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Keep moving on down the list here.
Mr. Thompson, David?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
So the variance is denied.
Okay. Thank you, board. Now we want to move on for another case. Here's V hashtag 20 dash 007, a dimensional variance that we're hearing for Sonny Goodman, 1452 wagon wheel lane. Mr. Goodman, are you out there and available to talk?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. You have the floor right now, so go ahead and tell us about the dimensional variance for this case.
I am going to pass the floor to my wife, Melanie. Hello?
We're here.
Yeah. Melanie Goodman will be speaking on my behalf.
Okay.
All right.
We're ready for her.
Go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. How are you tonight?
Good.
Well, the reason why we're here today, because we moved into our home with the, with, we had called the zoning board, well, the zoning and planting area before we moved into this house to make sure that we would be able to build a ramp for, well, it's a private BMX training course for our daughter, who is currently a Gold Cup champion and number one in the state for her age group in racing. She has been training in the streets currently. Before we moved.
There's this interference.
Before we bought the house, all right, I got ahead of myself. Before we bought the house, we called ahead to the, to the zoning board to make sure that we'd be allowed to build in our backyard. My husband spoke to somebody in the office and they told us that it would be considered a playground structure and that it wouldn't be an issue as long as it was non-permanent and was on brick or papers that it could be moved. It is built on bricklayers. It can be moved. Everything can be broken down into eight-foot sections. We were told that we wouldn't need a building permit, so when. So when COVID-19 hit and everything shut down, my husband was home for a month. We decided to go ahead and build the ramp that we wanted to create for her to be able to train, especially with the BMX tracks being closed down. It didn't open up until mid-June. So we built, somebody from the community must have been disturbed that we didn't have a building permit. They contacted the township. We were told that we, we got a paper in the mail to fill out a building permit, which at that point, we were, you know, questioned, we were questioning why we were being asked this. But regardless, we went ahead and filled out the building permit for it. Where Mark Lloyd told us that we were above our square footage based on the size of our house, the floor plan of our house. So we applied for the variance so that possibly we could, for our daughter, so that she can continue the bold dream to be an Olympic, Olympic team of BMX racing. I hope I condensed that enough for you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goodman. I, I failed to mention here that the purpose of the hearing is to receive comments from the public to consider the dimensional variance requested from section 5.2 accessory structure. Proposes a 68 by 24, which is 1,532 square feet for a BMX bicycle ramp in the rear yard of their home. Again, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this particular?
And we do have a couple, a few of them here. Katissa Allen?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katissa Allen, and I'm here with my husband Henderson Allen. And we live at the home across the street from the Goodman's. So if I'm sitting on my porch, I can look directly across and see their house. I don't have a problem with the ramp. Actually, I think it's good that the children are outside. Their children are always outside playing and having a good time. And during, you know, we don't typically see kids outside no more. My kids, I have two boys, and they play outside. They're older though than their kids. So it's refreshing to see kids outside playing. In fact, when my family is over here, we enjoy watching her on the bike rap. It is in their backyard, not like it's the front yard blocking anything that, you know, that would hinder the neighborhood or being an eyesore or anything. So I would say that it's okay for them to have it if you would definitely consider that. That would be great. You have anything, darling? And that was it, unless you have any other questions of me.
Any of my board members have anything to ask?
No, thank you.
A bunch of those. All right. Thank you so much for participating in our meeting.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, any, any other questions that we might want to talk with David about? Or the amount of variance that they're looking for, which is fairly good size? I'm wondering if, I, I visited there yesterday and was with Mrs. Goodman for quite some time.
And Mr. Brown?
Yes.
We do have a few more comments on here.
Oh, good. Thank you.
All right, Anupa Todd?
Yes, hello. Can you start the video as well?
Uh, you should be able to.
It says it's muted. It's disabled.
All right, there's a video.
Okay. Okay. Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anupa Todd, and I am an Ottawa Hills Residence Association Board Member. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Goodman's. I've seen Audrey in the neighborhood. She's nine years old. And she's been competing for the last five years for her BMX competition. And I feel that I'm supporting her along with my board as well. I know that she is working very hard. She's a state champion. And I feel that continuing her training and her BMX training would be beneficial for her to have this ramp that would be in their backyard. So, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Appreciate your input. Board members, anything that you'd like to ask or comment?
There might be more people waiting to provide comment.
Yes, I got Helga Block.
Good, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm so glad I could be here to support Melanie. I also am a member of the Ottawa Hills subdivision. And I also feel that the ramp is no problem to our community. In fact, I think, I'm speaking as a mental health professional, that we really need to be considering the mental health of our young people right now. And if this is something that's gonna keep Aubrey motivated and happy and encouraged, then we should all be supportive of it. And like the first commenter said, this is not an eyesore. It is located in their backyard. If it's so bothersome to somebody, I feel like they could install a privacy fence for them. But it is absolutely no bother for the community. And again, let's consider what's best for our children, especially during this very difficult time. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Julie Hare?
Hi, I'm Julie here, and I'm here with my husband. Titus here. We actually live right next door to them. And we feel that eyesore, we feel like since it's been built, we've been had, we've had rodents, dead rodents in our front yard, in our backyard because of the home. And even if we did install a privacy fence, the ramp is so high, they can go to the top of it and stand there and still have no privacy. And we are a very active family also. We get outside. We go on runs and play tennis and different things like that. So another thing is like, if my son wanted to, he wants to grow up to be an engineer, but it still doesn't mean I get to build a roller coaster in my backyard. And also, this is against the ordinance. The, the, the size is just too big. If, I, I'm not going to, but if I wanted to sell my house one day, it could hinder me. It can hinder us from doing so because it's devaluing the property. That's how we feel. And I'd like to say something also.
I'm Julie's Harris' husband. A lot of people that signed a petition, they really don't get a full picture of what we see on a day-to-day basis. There's a lot of trash collected in that backyard. And this rent will add to their lifestyle. I feel that they didn't consider us before they built it. I just think that, as you can see from the pictures, that we have suffered a lot. And I'm asking for the board to upkeep the code. We wouldn't even come to you if it wasn't a code. But we felt like we wanted to do it the right way.
And we would like to keep the neighborhood beautiful, how, how it's always been.
And we've had few people come out from companies. And immediately, when they pull up in our driveway, it says, wow, what are they building up there? That is not good. My guests, my company, all of them have complained. And I've noticed they said something about their little girl out there riding on the ramp. She does not ride on that ramp. The only time we see her, maybe once or twice, I can count it on my hand. And I have not seen her on a BMX bike.
She's on a, one of those little scooters where you, I guess, I don't know if it's called a kicking, but she rides the ramp with that. But I have seen her father, Sonny, on the ramp, the BMX bike. But I've never seen her practicing or doing anything of that sort to prepare herself for the Olympics or any other achievements. I've also had a couple neighbors come and ask me different questions. I am, one neighbor told me, I am so happy that I do not stay where you stay at because I would not want that. And I had another neighbor come and say, what in the blank are they building? And I told that person that they would have to go and ask them because I didn't want to discuss it with them. Thank you for listening to our comments, and we hope that you would consider what we've told you all. Thank you.
Well, thank you for participating, both you and your husband.
We have Heather Beeson? Heather? Ms. Beeson?
Yes, hi. Sorry, I was lagging. Hi, my name is Heather Beeson. I also live in Ottawa Hills. I first met Melanie's daughter, she's nine now, our daughter's at the same age, probably a good four or five years ago. She was riding a BMX bike. My daughter thought it was the coolest thing ever because she was still on training wheels. And I think it is absolutely amazing what this little girl has accomplished in her short time on earth, because she's way further than most of us. I think her aspiration of becoming an Olympic medalist is amazing. And that would be huge for Grand Blanc in general, for her to bring the gold home to our community. And with it being in their backyard, I don't see how it's going to affect property values. Like Melanie said, it is all able to be taken apart. It's not permanent. Non-permanent structures do not generally bring down property values. I'm sorry that her neighbors have an issue with that, but she has to do what's best for her daughter and her family. And getting her children outside and not sitting outside on the electronics all the time is amazing. I have six children, and I struggle each day to get my children off the electronics and outside playing. And I wish my children had the aspirations that her daughter has. Her daughter is a role model. And I think we should be encouraging that. She could be doing so much worse right now. I appreciate the time for allowing me to speak, and I hope that you decide in favor for the Goodman's. Thank you.
Thank you for participating. Is there anyone else locked their ratty?
I don't see anybody else.
Okay. So I think we've covered pretty much the dimensional variance that we're, they're looking for. If you take a look at the agenda, the, they're looking for a 68 by 24 variance. Right now, I think their, their home is about 1,800 square feet. We need to have Mr. Ladd, or Mr. Lloyd, talk about what our, our role is to look for the minimum variance necessary. With the numbers that I'm looking at here, they look big. And I'd like to get some input from Mr. Lloyd, as well as Mr. Laddie, on this subject.
And Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Another one that wanted to make a comment?
Yes.
I'm actually, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm on the left-hand side.
Are you there, sir?
Mr. Gales?
Did you lose him, Robbie?
I think so. Are you there, Chris?
Well, it looks like we've lost him. No one else is in line to speak. Close the public comment on #20-007 for a dimensional variance at 1452 wagon wheel drive. Comments from anyone? Mr. Atkins?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Ms. Hone?
I guess a couple things. First of all, I know that this is a very heated discussion. And, and it's, to me, it's very difficult. I dove into the ordinance for about one to two hours last night trying to figure out another way or another angle that we could approach this. And there really isn't. It is, it is an accessory structure. And the only way to approach this is what we've always approached, is the five or six different items that we have to go by. Fortunately, we are forced to meet like this. And I'm, and I just really want to express that I really wish that we could do this in person. There's probably a lot for people. And just like Mr. Gales, who wanted to speak, he's unable to because of technology. And I think that's just very unfortunate, first of all. Secondly, I'd really like to have had a site plan. I know there's a sketch. But Mr. Lloyd, do we know that they have complied with the setbacks, side yard setbacks? And the setback that's required from their house to the structure, which I think is required to be 10 feet?
Yeah, we have not confirmed that because we don't have that information. But from site visits, it would appear as though it would meet the setback requirements. It's the area requirements. That's a problem.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Let's see. And I guess, I, like I said, I am struggling. And I, and I also struggle with the fact that if they called the township, we don't really know if they said it was a playground. They don't, we don't know if they've said the dimensions that were gonna be there. I don't know that anybody at the township over the phone would say that, yay, you should be able to do that. So that kind of bothers me a little bit. But in general, I mean, I think it's great what this little girl's accomplished. You know, I wish all of our young kids were that motivated. I don't know that this is the proper place for this type of structure. I do have a question for the applicant. Is, I did a little bit of research on some neighboring areas in which they have the race tracks available for training and things. It looks like they are only open through October. My question to the applicant is what happens in October, November, when it, you know, the weather starts interfering? What happens with that structure?
Well, they're planning on, because I have a friend that shrink wraps yachts, and he is planning on taking them to our home. That it stays in good condition throughout the winter.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Laddie, anything to add to the conversation?
Mr. Chairman, thanks for asking. I, I think that I'm gonna defer to Mr. Lloyd on this case and, and fellow board members. I, I think that you've got the issues squared away. And you also have the criteria that you need to find in order to grant the variance. You need to find all five of them in, in the affirmative. So I'll stand by and ask if anyone has any specific questions for me. Happy to try.
I'll just do a comment. I spent probably 40 minutes with Mrs. Goodman yesterday and looking at the device, I'll call it for lack of a better term. And it, it pretty much fills up their backyard because they've got a trampoline out there as well. So they, they've got all kinds of things for their children to play on and play with. And it pretty much fills up. My concern again now is the size of it. And I'm wondering, thinking out loud here to my colleagues as well, there's no room to move back there, in my opinion. I don't necessarily mean I'm against it. But it's really pushing the envelope here, I think, in terms of their proposed variance. And I wonder if my other colleagues have any comments regarding that, or Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, no, no. What I would like to do is make sure that a couple of these letters and additional correspondence that we've received, you know, just gets, has the consideration that they deserve. I don't know that you, that the commission or the board has received them all, simply because, you know, some of them came in after the packets went out. So I've got a couple of things that I'll just walk through and make sure that these go on the record. And so if Robbie will give me that permission to share the screen again, I'll do that. And just a few things. Not sure that you've seen all of these, but I'll show them to you, and we'll go from there. All right, Robbie just gave me permission, so just give me a second. So here's a few letters that came in and as I said, some of them you may have, I just don't know. This one came in on nine eleven. And this is from, let me get the name, it's being blocked out. Mr. Baldis from Madison, Wisconsin, and apparently they're in the industry and they have some knowledge and they're supportive of this and they would just like to convey their support. We also have some folks from the, from the Greater Genesee County Area BMX Parents Association and that's, again, some folks expressing their support. You have some additional photographs that we have from and of the ramp itself in the backyard and you can see it's, it's pretty big. I've seen these carved out of concrete, so it's, it's pretty much an official kind of sized device. And then there's one more that came from a neighbor who is not in favor of it, but, you know, and I think they might have spoke this evening. And they've also sent some photographs that I think are helpful, at least, and I think it addresses Mr. Brown's comments about the backyard being, you know, maybe a little bit crowded. But clearly, you know, that stuff is all movable and portable. It's just, you know, like Mr. Brown said, there's a good amount of it and there's some more items. Not exactly sure what some of this stuff is, but there are some, some things out there that, you know, we'd probably like to see get taken care of. And then, you know, and then as you can see, you know, this is just the side of the house, I'm not sure what this represents. But in any event, point is, you know, we've gotten a variety of comments from folks about this and I didn't know which all that this, what you had. And I know that some stuff came out subsequent to us sending out our packet and I just wanted to make sure that, that the stuff that we had seen that maybe didn't make the packet, you guys had an opportunity to take a look at that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. To clarify some, some points here, the applicant is requesting an eight hundred and fifty-two square foot variance for the backyard for their BMX. Oops, have I lost everybody?
We're good.
Okay. Board members, do you have any discussion with, between one another on this particular case regarding the required, not required, requested variance?
I just wanted to say that I did visit the site today myself and I've seen some of these other ramps in other places, kind of put together with a bunch of scrap material. It looks like all brandy lumber, as far as it being an ice, probably an ice store, maybe there's someone that is not into BMX. But as far as from a ramp standpoint, it seemed to be constructed very well and it just looked, it represented itself pretty nice in comparison to ramps that I've seen.
I would agree in visiting it as well. It's quite a device. All right, anything else, Ms. Honay or anyone?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I do have a question again to the applicant. When we were talking about shrink wrapping it, that would be monstrous. Is this, I mean, and whether you've got white shrink wrapping or blue or whatever color, that would really be enormous in a backyard. Because it's a temporary structure, is that something that would be taken down for the winter?
It's not something that we could really take down, like we could move it, it's the eight-foot sections, each section should be taken down. But as for, like, we could take it and move it into different sections and have each section wrapped, we could do that as well. Another we could do is we could put semi-tarps over it and tarp it down. There's options that we could do. We're trying to make it so that we don't cause any distress to any neighbors. One of the options that we could have did was gone with, you know, dirt. And things on the neighbors at all in that way. Be the best way to go about doing it. And, you know, we're open to any suggestions that we have. We've offered to build privacy ramps or to put our providees up, you know, if any of the neighbors had an issue with it. We're open to suggestions. Some of the photos that you saw was from me cleaning my camper. I took a whole side of it down and I put it onto the, to the trampoline for it to dry. So like, but we are open to, to any communication and any suggestions that you have. Our, our plan was to go ahead and to have our friends come out and shrink wrap it. It would be considered the size of a yacht. But like I said, we could also do semi-truck tarps.
Yeah, definitely more than a yacht, but yeah, we, we have in the past had our boat in the backyard and wrapped it and it's not near that size and it's still, we're not going to be doing that anymore. I just don't feel comfortable with that with the neighbors. So, and this is much, much larger than, than our boat. So I just have a real problem with this. I guess I'm, I'm sending this out to my, my, my co-members here. I really want to encourage this. I think it's great, the ambition and the fact that, you know, that dad put all this together for her and, I mean, I really do. And she's got the support of the association, but it is a massive structure and variance request. And I do feel bad for the neighbors. I don't know that I would want that next to me either. I don't know, maybe I would, but I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing some, some feelings out there, guys. What do you think?
Thompson, what do you think?
I guess I'm, I'm struggling with seeing another applicant come to us as a board, kind of begging for forgiveness. It's a violation of the ordinance, but here we are again discussing another project that was built without approval, without anything from, from the township. And, and here we are now kind of stuck in an odd spot because, yeah, you want to support all these children doing these activities, but that's why I can, I don't know. It's a very, very difficult thing, but again, it's not allowed, it's not approved and I think we've got to stick to their, our ordinances and unfortunately, stick, stick to our.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Atkins?
Yeah, I think, can you guys hear me? Am I on there?
Yes.
We hear you.
I think going forward, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if we see more requests like this going forward. I know a lot of companies are really looking at, you know, more remote workforce, probably different job classifications that we never even thought would ever have the ability to work remote. So, you know, in balancing that, yeah, I agree, it's a, you know, it's a monstrous structure, but I think, you know, myself living in a homeowner's association, having a homeowner's association in, in my subdivision. You know, I really think you have the support of them is kind of a, a pretty big statement in itself because usually they're, they're pretty stringent on, you know, what they want their neighbors to follow in terms of conditions for their bylaws. So, I don't know, I think you're going to start seeing more of this, you know, as children are, you know, doing stuff, remote schooling, people are doing more things at home. It's not always going to be easy to take people out to go and do activities and I think it's great that it is an outdoor activity. This is kind of unique. It's not like this thing could be much smaller. It kind of is what it is to support riding a bike on it. So, yeah, I think, you know, I agree with Mr. Thompson that, you know, it's kind of ask forgiveness after it's already done. This isn't, you know, the first time we've seen this. This tends to happen a lot. How this structure got to the point that it is, you know, you would think that something this big would have popped up or jumped on the radar when it was a quarter of the way done or, you know, one side of it was done. But, you know, it's there, it's in place and seems to be a lot of support and some good reasons to have it. I do support it, but I, again, we have to find the, a reason that it meets one of the criteria.
True, thank you, Mr. Atkins. I think, again, we, we're, the applicant is seeking an eight hundred and fifty-two square foot variance for the existing structure. I'd like to maybe see a motion that we can at least talk about, Mr. Eaton?
When I was talking with the applicant earlier today, the applicant had indicated that they had either called or went into the township. Did the applicant, does applicant have the name of the person that they spoke with? Because in the prior conversation, it sounded like they did nothing and from the indication that I was given today that they, they did talk to somebody at the township. Do, do we have a name of the person they spoke with at all?
If you could unmute my funny Goodman, he could speak on that because he's the one that spoke with somebody in the office.
Hi, I have been trying to get you guys to address me for the last twenty minutes and people have had their hands raised and they weren't being addressed. So I just wanted to point that out. I messaged each one of you individually too. So, I don't know about the format of this meeting, but it is not going very smoothly, according, I mean, to my. This is how it all went down. We wanted to buy a home where we weren't going to be restricted for building a ramp for my daughter to practice on. My, my wife came to Grand Blanc and researched, found that house, went into the backyard, looked in the window, saw the fireplace connecting both of our rooms and fell in love with it. And I said, the only stipulation for me, I don't care, you can, we can buy that house, we'll go, you know, we'll go out above and beyond what, you know, we should be able to afford and get in there and make our family and our life happy, right? Well, my stipulation was that there are no restrictions for building a ramp. So when I called in to the building department, they told me that the inspectors that were normally there, that would answer my question, weren't available. And I believe it was Craig Kyle or Mike, Mike Kyle. He would be the electrical department. It was one of the other two people. It was either Mike Kyle or the Glenn guy that does plumbing and mechanical. So when I spoke with them, I asked them about building a ramp in the backyard and said, oh, I can answer your questions, but I'm electrical or whatever department it was that he was in. And he said, as long as it is not a permanent structure, which it isn't, and it was built up on blocks and not a, not a permanent foundation, which we meet that criteria, that it would be considered playground equipment. That is what I was told and that's what I went on going forward, buying our home. I guess the things that had happened since then is that, you know, race tracks have been closed down, right? And indoor facilities have not been available and, you know, there's nothing close to our region that would be outdoors that we could go to. And most of those places were closed down as well when we started the construction of this. Now granted, it was about three years ago and I've had a ramp in my backyard for the entire time of that three years before we built this one and there was no complaints. So I was under the assumption that it was okay to build a ramp in the backyard and it would be considered playground equipment. A couple of other things I'd like to address is, I, I know that neighbors to the right of us don't like us and they've always had some kind of an issue with us. And they once, they once called us, us for me having my car parked on my, in front of my property and said that they might not get their mail at five o'clock in the morning. So I was woke up by the police to move my vehicle from in front of my own property. I mean, they're obviously aggrieved in some way or they don't like us or they don't like our cleanliness or, or they have whatever preconceived notions about us. But we're just a normal family, well, maybe a little bit extreme, but, you know, we're, we're just trying to be happy, man. We're not, we're not trying to bother anyone and I, I think that we've had the community support, we've had everyone that's within the range of this, of this variance, signed the petition that, that we have submitted. And the person that is complaining that still continues to complain is our neighbor to the right. And I guarantee you it has nothing to do with the ramp. They just don't like us. So, I mean, we're not bad people, we're not trying to do anything bad. I'm just trying to enrich the life of myself, my, my family, my daughter, my son and, you know, we're, we're trying to build them up to be good, strong citizens and, and to be successful, you know? And this is, this is part of making that happen, you know? My wife homeschools, she takes care of those children, she does everything that I can't do. And I find it really funny that they've seen me riding that ramp more than my daughter when I'm only home two to three days out of a three to four week period. I get to come home and try to make everything, you know, try to, try to spend time with my kids and try to be there for my wife and do all the other necessary things for us to be happy. And then I got to go back to work. So I think jiving, yeah, on that point.
All right, Mr. Goodman?
Yep.
Didn't mean to interrupt, but if you can wrap it up, please, quickly?
Sure, sure. Well, if my neighbor on the left would have been able to, he would tell you that it, we don't stay on it, you know, she's not out there after nine o'clock at night, which is city ordinance. You know, we try to be respectful of everyone around us. If, if we had known in the beginning, an issue. Got also bought property elsewhere and didn't have any kind of an issue with having an accessory playground ramp, whatever you'd like to call it.
I appreciate your input.
The other thing is, I have one more thing. They said it would be an ice store, which is what they said. Technically, we could get a permit and build a smaller ramp and it would be still there. So, I mean, them having that are. Because I will, if there was some reason I didn't get the variance, then I would end up building a ramps, a smaller ramp, which would be very costly to me. Because I've already put a lot of money and time into this ramp, you know, under the impression that it was okay. But that's all.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Lloyd.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out and I truly appreciate Mr. Goodman's comments about his effort to communicate with somebody. And I don't know how long ago that was, but I can tell you that when we discovered this and we got a complaint and we had to deal with a couple of issues and we did the follow-up, we talked internally with everybody about how this could have happened. And, you know, if somebody's, you know, away in a neighborhood, it's a pretty big thirty-six square mile community and on this little fifteen thousand square foot lot, they're, they're building, you know, a ramp that's thirteen hundred square feet. Yeah, you know, that's sixteen hundred square feet. That's, that's kind of small in the scheme of things, but in that neighborhood and in that backyard, it sure is a big thing. But I do want to point out that if, I, I just a little troubled by, by Mr. Goodman's comments about having talked to either Mike Kyle or Glenn, because like he said, Mike is our electrician, electrical inspector and he would refrain without question from responding to a question like that. He would say, no, that's not for me. These are professionals and Glenn would be the same way. He's a, he's our plumbing inspector. So these guys don't get out of their lane and make commitments and comments to folks very often. And so that causes me concern if in fact that happened, but I just want to point out that, that we, I did have conversations with everybody about, because we heard that they communicated with somebody. So of course we wanted to find out who and nobody in. So of course we wanted to find out who and nobody internally can, can remember anything. And of course they can't remember, um, having spoken to anybody. And so it just makes it, that part of it there is just unsettling to me. Uh, because there's, you know, it sounds like there was some kind of a, a, of an effort to be made to, to get approval. And boy, those guys would be the last ones to ever weigh in on something like that. I, I just find that very surprising. Um, and besides, you know, they would need to come in and get a permit. We would need to have that structure engineered. We would need to look at it from an engineered construction standpoint. We need to see how in fact it needs to be secured to the ground. I mean, we, there would be an awful lot of review that we would need to do on that. So keep in mind at the end of this conversation and whatever decision you want to make, I, I, I hope that at a minimum, you would require that this somehow be permitted through the building permitting process and that we have some way of, of, of inspecting it and making sure that it meets that criteria. I, I, I would hope that that'll be part of this and that we're not gonna leave that, uh, you know, off on the side. Because it's an important component of, of, of this and to have a structure. I mean, we, we grant that. We need to make sure it's safe. And, uh, I, I'm not sure how we go about doing that. Um, and these guys, like I said, they would never have been the ones to weigh in on. But that's just the difference of, of the conversation. I'm just saying that's a surprise to me. Not disputing what Mr. Goodman said. I'm just telling you I'm surprised by it.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. I think it's appropriate, uh, that we consider looking at a motion here. And this would be on case V hashtag twenty dash zero zero seven, a dimensional variance uh, for that fourteen fifty-two wagon wheel lane in Grand Blank Township. Uh, is there anyone that would like to make a motion for further discussion? Mr. Atkins, would you be willing to make a motion?
Quite honestly, uh, after hearing the applicant speak a little bit, I'm, I'm, I'm starting to, uh, some, some other thoughts going through my head. So not right, right at the moment.
Okay, that's a nay.
Um, no, but I do have a question for Mr. Laddie. Um, I know that, um, we can apply different conditions to this approval. Um, can we do something like a temporary one-year variance? And kind of like a one-year permit and see how this thing goes? Because like Mr. Lloyd said, we do have to go through the, the building permit process. And we don't know what that's going to mean. Um, and then we've got a winter coming up where almost six months is not even going to be usable. So is this something that we can, I, I don't really want to postpone it, but it's like, let's just see where this goes? Is it possible?
Um, you can, it's true that you can apply conditions, uh, in certain circumstances to a variance. It's difficult to do, uh, like a time circumstance. In other words, it's, it's difficult to say, well, let's, let's allow it as a temporary use for a period of time. That becomes, and I know this is a, this is a variance, a, a dimensional variance request. But it come, it comes almost like a temporary use permit.
Okay.
I think it's difficult in this scenario. Now, I'll, I'll defer to him. He's, he's obviously an expert in this area. And if he feels that, that there's a different take on it, I'll, I'm all ears.
Well, you know, you do make up, you make a couple of good points. And also if we're going through the building permit process, it may be something that turns into not a temporary, it's more of a permanent structure. So I guess, you know, that, that again, it's just a whole potential can of worms, I guess.
Mr. Atkins?
I guess now that we're talking about it a little more, um, yeah, my, my question would be if this still goes through the building, um, inspection permit, um, you know, earlier to Mr. Thompson's comment, you know, it's, it's already done. Now we're circling back trying to, um, I guess work backward. But if it has to go through that process anyway, maybe this is for, uh, Mr. Laddie. Is this kind of the cart before the horse? Like, is this, uh, you know, kind of like when you build a deck? I know that's attached. But, you know, you gotta kind of have it inspected along the way, make sure it's safe, all those good things. Um, should those steps be done first?
Well, they, they, they would have been done first, right? Under ideal circumstances, right? So that, first of all, depending on whatever plan was submitted, perhaps you'd be looking at plans instead of, of an already built structure. And then, um, if you guys consider to, to allow a variance of whatever size, then I would think that, uh, the second phase would be that they would have to comply with any necessary code requirements or building requirements that would allow them to construct this structure. Um, and, and that, you don't have that here. So if you, if you're, uh, looking back on it now that it's already built, if you decided it's allowed, then you've got, then there's going to be a second hurdle. Make sure that it's not going to collapse and hurt anybody and meet whatever requirements exist. And then if it's got to be of a certain size, then, then, then that process needs to follow as well. So with the cart before the horse is just caused by the fact that it's already been, it's already been built. And again, Mr. Lloyd, if you have any input on that, I'll, if I got that wrong way in.
No, you, you got it right. Thank you. The only addition I would put in there would simply be, you know, as we, uh, get these projects and, you know, if, if this would have come in earlier, it would be like the, the variances we grant for, you know, a large pole barn, where we would have granted the variance in advance and then they would submit the plans accordingly. But in this case, it's, it's like you said, cart before the horse. And so we do need to, you know, back into this one. And, you know, it's not as if we haven't had structures built before and we've had to back into them. I just want to make darn sure that the thought process of this body is not only if you're, if you were gonna grant this variance, that you would, you would do so contingent upon them obtaining all of the necessary, um, uh, building permits. And so, you know, that's just a safety precaution from my perspective that I would want to ensure we had. And if your thoughts were to not require that, I wanted to have some additional dialogue. That was it.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I have a thought that, you know, if there is a need for this community, why can't we have it at Creasy? We've got a lot of empty space.
Good question.
I was thinking that too. If they're ambitious, they can go ahead and do something like that. But I didn't want to put the township in a situation where we have an insurance issue or whatever. I don't know what's all associated with that. But, but yeah, I mean, somebody wanted a dog park, they, you know, they got the dog park to go through. You know, if there is a need and, and, you know, interest in that, then that's another way that they can handle it. I certainly thought about that.
Yeah, I got, I'm not mistaken. I think an Eagle Scout did it for a scout project or thing.
Any other discussion? Uh, if not, I'd like to maybe hear a motion, uh, regarding case number V hashtag twenty dash zero zero seven. Dimensional variance of eight hundred and fifty-two square feet at the residence of fourteen fifty-two wagon wheel lane.
I guess, Mr. Brown, I'll make the motion to deny, uh, case two zero dash zero zero seven.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Do I hear any other voices? Mr. Eaton?
I mean, you look at the criteria that we have to meet, um, it unfortunately doesn't meet the criteria. And we can look at the emotional side of it and look at the, the children being affected by it. Uh, but we still have to, um, go by what we're given. And unfortunately, there's not, no angle we can work to, um, to help the applicant get this through. Um, I will support the motion.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for vote. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chairman, wait.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Can we again do a roll call vote?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, let's start with Mr. Eaton. Uh, Mr. Atkins?
Nay.
Uh, Mr. Thompson? That's an I?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Honay?
Yes.
And Mr. Brown?
Yes.
The variance is denied four to one.
Thank you, Board members.
And if I might, um, Mr. Laddie, you can help me with this, but I think, uh, in these instances, um, it's, it's a good idea, particularly with some folks who, who may not be, um, represented, is to just let them know that, um, you know, and I'll put this in a disposition letter, but, you know, they do have the ability to appeal this decision, not to the board, not to the township board, but to the circuit court. It is a quasi judicial decision and it will, uh, if you choose to appeal, you'll need to appeal that through the court systems.
You're exactly right. But it also, that appeal has to be taken within thirty days after you get a letter affirming the decision of the zoning board appeals or the minutes have been, uh, uh, accepted by the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. I don't think there's anything additionally on our agenda for this evening. Our next, uh, next meeting is, uh, based upon, uh, yes, request for variance. So I would say that we probably are, uh, we don't have anything, do we, Mr. Lloyd, coming out?
Yeah, we actually, we do have a fence variance that's, uh, on, uh, uh, that's pending. So it looks like we probably will have an item and we may want to have some discussion on some of our ordinance language. We'll see if that comes to fruition. I may need to go through an exercise of determining how and where we place these fences based on some of our code language. So, um, just be prepared for, you know, a little bit of that. I'll have graphics and charts and all kinds of wonderful things. But, uh, we, we may need to get through that discussion on, on how we apply some of our ordinance, uh, language for fences.
Mr. Chair?
Eddie?
The other thing to consider is that, uh, we had two cases that were denied tonight. So the minutes will be fairly important to adopt. So that it will allow people to make an appeal if, if they choose to do that, notwithstanding the correspondence that, that. Then so add that to your agenda item. If it's a fence variance or whatever, um, we can adopt those minutes and get these folks on their way.
Okay.
Thank you for the input. It's been, um, kind of a tough night here. We had a couple of different, difficult cases here. And I want to compliment everybody for the great job in that they've done tonight. Appreciate it. It made my job easier. With that, next meeting will be sometime in October.
So October tw- are you looking for a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah. Maybe, maybe we want to do that. Well, thank you. I hear a motion for.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
It's caught up and everything. I didn't, I guess I figured we can continue all night.
I'll, I'll support that, Mr. Atkins.
All right. And I think it's, uh, everyone is in agreement with that one?
Yes.
That was the voice vote that I was calling for.
Perfect. That's what I heard.
So, um, Mr. Laddie, are you doing the, getting the minutes going or is that through Mr. Lloyd or?
No, I, I, I'll assist, yeah, in the, in the minutes. And so, uh, by the way, we also had minutes from last month's meeting to approve too. So next, next, next minute heavy.
Yep. I apologize and I won't, I won't delay on this one. I promise.
Okay. I think we're all done. Thank you so much for all of your good input. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night.